Welcome, everyone. We're here for the town first public hearing for our 2021-2022 town budgets, September 13th, 2021. After this, we're going to have our CRA budget meeting and then we're going to proceed to the actual town council meeting for this month. If we could have a call to order, please, a roll call.
Mayor Paul Chalhoub.
Present.
Vice Mayor Robert Chalhoub.
Here.
President Pro Tem Gregory Freebold.
Here.
Councilmember Valentin Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Albert Pavan.
Here.
All right, if we could have a moment of silence for Glenn William Fitzgerald, 33 years old, passed away too soon earlier in August of this year. May his memory be eternal. Pastor Honor, would you be so kind as to do the invocation and lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
My Father in heaven, we come to you tonight and just thank you, Lord, for the privilege to be here tonight, to pray prior to this meeting tonight. Lord, I think of these good men and women tonight that are on this board, and, Lord, I see them as very gifted people. You have gifted them, Lord, and their jobs, and I thank you for that. Lord, I thank you tonight that they're humble enough to realize we still need God. We need God's help. We need God's wisdom. We need divine leadership. Lord, we pray for that tonight in this meeting. Lord, I thank you that every time I come to the meeting, I see men and women with great vision and concern over this wonderful community in which we live. Lord, they're all the time trying to make it better. God bless them. And, Lord, it requires a lot of labor and a lot of sacrifice. And, Lord, maybe many people don't know, they sacrifice so much. They're away from their home, away from their families, they're going to seminars, they're going to meetings, and just to make this a better place to live. God bless them for it. Lord, I thank you tonight that we live in a peaceful community compared to the rest of the world. Lord, I saw the police officers here tonight, and I want to thank you for them. And, Lord, I hope they feel appreciated because we do appreciate them. Lord, their life is really on the line every day. God bless them. Thank you for the chief and his leadership. I pray your blessing upon their homes, their families, their lives, and I pray you keep them safe. God, again, I pray your blessing upon this community and all the people in it. Lord, be with the Fitzgerald family tonight, 33. Lord, that's hard to deal with for sure. Lord, I pray that you'd be with that family. I pray that you'd comfort them as only God can comfort. God lost a son one day, and so God knows how to comfort. So, Lord, be with them, and we'll thank you for it. We're praying for them tonight. So, Lord, bless everything we do tonight. May you get honor and glory. And, again, we thank you for the Lord Jesus, the Savior. God bless tonight. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen. Let's all stand, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, "One Nation Under God, Indivisible, with Liberty and Justice for All."
Thank you very much. Always great to have you here. All right. This is our first public hearing for the 2021-2022 town budget. Mr. Clark, would you like to do your presentation, please?
I have a brief 90-slide presentation. This has changed slightly since we talked about it in July. We made some adjustments because the American Rescue Plan Act money actually showed up, and we're expecting some more next year. So, let me go through this budget. First, we'll start with our core mission. As always, our core mission are police services, code compliance, utility services, permitting services, and general government. Under the general fund budget, we're looking at a very limited capital expenditure again this year, two new vehicle leases, one for the police and one for the admin department, and very limited expenditures in parks and recreation. We have recovered some from what we looked like last year budget-wise, but we're still not back to where what I would consider as normal. Special events are budgeted beginning in December. Whether we can actually hold them or not, I think remains to be seen, but we do have money in the budget to start with the tree lighting and continue through our normal spring activities. The proposed general fund budget is a balanced budget. There's no change in the mileage rate. We're holding at 62798. The current year rollback would be 5.9775. Our current taxable value is 301 million, which is up 5.12% from last year. Labor, there's no changes in the number of staff that we have, and no changes in the health insurance or retirement benefits that we provide to our employees. We're looking at a merit increase of 3.5%. That's following the collective bargaining agreement, contract, and guidelines, again, to ensure that we don't set up an us-and-them situation. While that only covers the police officers, I am doing that across the board for all employees. We are looking at a cost-of-living index that went up 4.4%. Our garbage collection rates will be up 3%, and, as I said, a very limited capital budget, only $13,500. Utility fund. Staffing, again, we're looking at no additional staffing. We're looking at a proposed 3.5% salary increase and no change in benefits. There is no new debt proposed, and when I say that, it's because I'm looking at new debt under the ARPA program. So, we actually need to come up with about $3 million to kick off our septic-to-sewer conversion program. Transfer to the general fund is $180,000, and we're looking at two new leased vehicles in utilities, replacing two of the vehicles that are currently there. The new initiatives will be to finish and implement the rate study, finish the new 12-inch water main project, and finish the new utility administration building. The budget is unbalanced in utilities, and that's because we have money in the bank to do some of these capital expenditures. So, we're planning on spending about $1 million more than what we normally would. We're looking in the capital budget at engineering for Micah West, engineering for the vacuum station, the new master vacuum station, and some pipeline R&amp;R work. Infrastructure surtax fund. So, last year, year before, I guess it was, we started with the infrastructure surtax fund as a separate accounting fund. We also did the Community Redevelopment Agency as a separate fund, and this year, we're doing the ARPA monies as a separate fund. It allows us to minimize our audit requirements, I guess is the best way to put it, because everything's accounted for separately. So, under the infrastructure surtax fund, we're estimating revenues of $226,000. Our planned expenditures are 1.1 million. Drainage, work, road maintenance, and the bridge. The bridge got delayed from this year to next year. Our estimated carry forward after all that work is done will be $320,000. The CRA Fund, we're estimating revenues at $72,000, and we're planning expenditures at $72,000. So, at the end of the day, that will be a balanced fund. We have the beautification program and the business incentive program that we're adding monies to and continuing. The last fund that we're talking about, which in our accounting system is Fund 103, is the ARPA Fund. We got $908,298 last week. We expect to get another $908,298 in fiscal year 2022, a year from now. Planned expenditures for next year will be $625,000, and that is the Lawrence Road Utility Relocation. Palm Beach County is widening Lawrence Road, and we're going to spend some money to move our pipes around to miss their pipes. It's about a $300,000 project we're estimating, and support for the new admin building. Now, let me say that the ARPA funds are very limited in what we can do with them. There are only certain things that the federal government is allowing to be done. About the only thing that we can do with them is utility projects. So, we need to be very careful how we spend the money. We can't spend more than $750,000 in any one year, or that triggers a special single-source audit. That single-source audit would be very expensive, probably $30,000. So, we'd rather put the money into projects instead of in the auditor's pocket. So, we have plans to spend about $650,000 a year to use up the 1.8 million that we're getting. So, you won't see us tackling big projects with this. We're going to knock off smaller projects that are in the capital budget, which is also published in the budget document. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions that counsel may have of me.
Councilman Pavan, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Councilman Rodriguez.
No questions.
President Pro Tem Freebold.
Dan, the utility administration building down there, when are we looking at that possibly being either a start or completed? I know we've talked about that and gone over the plans and everything, but just share that with everybody.
So, we're trying to do that as a design-build project, which means we don't hire the engineers or the architects. We let the contractor do that. Design-build projects are allowed, and in fact, under our Sourcewell Agreement, there are several design-build companies in the Sourcewell Agreement. So, using Sourcewell, we would not have to go out for bid. So, we're trying to move that project along quickly by using Sourcewell. There's two things that are challenging us. One is material supply. We're looking at a steel building. Apparently, Amazon had big plans for their expansion worldwide. So, they went to the steel mills, and they bought 1/3 of the capacity of the steel mills directly from the steel mill. So, getting steel to put up a steel building right now is a little bit of a challenge.
Sure.
And pricing that is a little bit bigger of a challenge. So, that's one consideration that we have. The other consideration is because we want to use some ARPA money for that, we're trying to ensure with information from National League of Cities and from Treasury that that would be a, that methodology would be acceptable to Treasury. So, we're working on that. I'm not sure, to answer your question directly, I'm not sure when we're going to kick.
Well, that's okay. It's a work in progress, small, steady steps.
Small, steady step.
The materials aren't easy for a lot of different areas to come by. And then, just quickly, so we're getting two draws from the relief fund act, right?
Yes.
One in this cycle and then one next year in that cycle.
Correct.
All right, and then two other just quick things, because just explain to everybody, you've seen some of the roadwork going on. Just bring us up to date on those, for lack of a better word, they're almost intersections, but they're really not. But what's going on with that?
So, Damon Gammons and I went around and looked at the worst road sections in town and decided that we wanted to spend money on those first. That was what I put forward in the prioritization list that I presented for basically the spend-down of the infrastructure money a couple of months ago. We're spending money in Pine Tree and South Lake because that intersection was so very bad, even though we'll probably tear it up again when sewers come through in three or four or five years. On, we're doing Edgewater right now. The next section will be Westlake from Gregory Road South to the L9 Canal, and then the section after that, the year after that, will be the L9 Canal down to Waterway.
All right. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Shalhoub.
No, Mr. Freebold touched on my concerns.
I don't have any questions for you, Dan.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your hard work on the budget.
Thanks, staff.
I agree. All right. Dan, when you get back, can you let me know if there's any emailed questions or written questions, and then we'll go to verbal questions here in the audience?
No chat, no questions, and no hands up.
All right. Anybody here in the audience have any questions or want to talk about the budget? All right. Take a motion to adjourn. All in favor? Say aye. Well, actually, now we're moving on to the CRA first public hearing for the budget, September 13th, 2021. We have a roll call, please.
Chairman Paul Chalhoub.
Present.
Vice Chairman Robert Chalhoub.
Here.
Commissioner Gregory Freebold.
Here.
Commissioner Valentin Rodriguez.
Here.
Commissioner Albert Pavan.
Here.
All right. Mr. Clark, do you have anything to add from your prior presentation? A little bit.
I have nothing to add, Mr. Mayor, but I thought it might be worthwhile taking just a minute and explaining what we're doing.
Sure.
The CRA is an independent organization. It, let me rephrase that to get the attorney to make sure that he agrees with me. The CRA is a dependent organization of the town of Lake Clark Shores, but it acts as an independent entity. And as such, we have to have our own separate meetings. So, we just adjourned the public hearing for the town for the budget, and now we are starting the CRA meeting where you change from council members to commissioners, and we're going to talk about the CRA budget. So, the CRA budget is, as I explained it, we're going to recognize about $72,000 worth of revenue, and we have planned $72,000 worth of expenditures.
Do you remember what the revenues then for the first year that we had the CRA was? Was it like 25 grand?
Just a moment.
Sure.
$39,000.
So, we've almost doubled that in, what, five years?
Four.
Four years.
Yeah.
I think that's fantastic. Anyone have any questions for Mr. Clark?
Mr. Clark, you talked about the beautification program before. Are those dollars coming from the CRA budget?
Yes.
Just help everybody understand some of your plans for the beautification program, too.
Well, the beautification program, as we've set it up, is a matching fund for any of the businesses or apartments that are in the CRA boundary. If they would like to do beautification to the outside of their building, we'll match that cost 50/50 up to a $5,000 limit per building.
Okay. That's good information. It's good. Nice incentive.
Yeah. A lot of good incentives going on in our area. All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Clark.
If I may add one item.
Sure.
Mr. Mayor, I know that you had asked if we could improve our marketing capabilities for the CRA, and there are monies in here to do that, not only using Elliot, but also using Dr. Delaney to help us with some of the background metric information. We're also looking for the CRA next year, a overlay zoning where we can actually do something more than what's currently there.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. Any audience questions on the CRA budget? Any emailed or written questions in from those attending virtually?
No, sir.
Take a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, sorry, I got to adjourn the public hearing. Public hearing portion is adjourned. Take approval of the consent agenda? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
So, now we're on to new business approval of Resolution 2021-03, submitting the 2021-2022 fiscal year CRA budget to the Lake Clark Shores Town Council for adoption as part of the Lake Clark Shores 2021-2022 town budget on September 28th, 2021.
Some of.
All in favor?
Aye.
Onto the audience comments for this part of the CRA meeting. I'm assuming none. All right. Anything written in? All right. Commissioner to comments? Anybody? All right. Take a motion to adjourn?
Some. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, we're going to move on to the main meeting. This is our town council meeting for September 13th, 2021. Have a roll call, please.
Mayor Paul Chalhoub.
Present.
Vice Mayor Robert Chalhoub.
Here.
President Pro Tem Gregory Freebold.
Here.
Councilmember Valentin Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Albert Pavan.
Here.
Take a motion to approve the agenda?
Some of.
All in favor?
Aye.
Take a motion to approve consent agenda?
Some of. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, moving on to presentations. This is probably the highlight of our evening. I know it's certainly the highlight of mine. We have some life safety awards to present to two amazing fine officers here at the town of Lake Clark Shores, Corporal Loicano and Officer Walker. Back on July 4th of 2021, they responded to an overdose called the Dunkin' Donuts. Officer Walker was first on scene and recognized an individual who had overdosed. He notified Corporal Loicano, who also responded with his Narcan, and within a few seconds of them administering the drug, the victim began to breathe, and then fire rescue was on scene, and his life was saved. Without the two fast actions, or the fast actions of these two amazing officers, his life would have surely been gone. So, I commend both of you very much for those efforts. Congratulations. You do a great service to our town and our community, including those who visit our community as well. So, Chief Smith, if you'd be so kind as to make the presentations.
All right. Mayor, can you come down and?
Congratulations, gentlemen.
All right. Is Richard joining us today?
Well, he was supposed to be.
Well, do you have an update that you can maybe provide everyone?
I can't.
On annexation?
I'm going to do my best.
This fine young gentleman sitting here is Representative Ross Wade.
Oh, fantastic.
Can you correct anything that I say wrong?
For the record, his name, chief, Dan?
John Carter.
John Carter? Welcome, John Carter.
So, I believe the way this is going to work this year, and the mayor has a letter to sign, as usual with a local bill, it has to go to the delegation, and the delegation will move it through the process. What's different this year is what we put into the local bill. The draft local bill is a very simple bill. It simply says that we're going to declare that area as an enclave. If we declare it as an enclave, then there's already statute that allows us to move forward and annex it. So, the bill is very simple. My understanding is that Representative Roth worked with Mr. Eric Miller to make sure that he was comfortable with the language, and theoretically, it's been blessed and is ready to go. All of the supporting documents are complete. We'll have a package of 15 copies of all of the documents, most of which you have in your packet, ready for distribution to Vicki, the Vicki Nolan, with the delegation, so that we can move this local bill forward. We have high hopes this year. Thanks to Representative Roth and all the great work he's done.
Thank you, Dan, and that means we're not going to be pursuing the larger statewide bill, right?
Correct.
Like, we're not taking a dual approach this time?
Correct. We have more confidence.
About that, that means we got a lot of confidence in that local bill.
We have a lot of confidence in Representative Roth.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
We appreciate very much that he stepped outside of his district to help us.
Yes.
Tremendously.
Come in.
I agree. Well, that sounds good. I'm looking forward to it. I really hope it works. We've been working on this for four or five years or longer, certainly since I've been on council. So, thank you very much.
I don't know if there's, and maybe Mr. Carter can tell us, I don't know if there's actually a motion that has to be taken for this, or if it's just this discussion in a public forum, and then the mayor signing the letter.
Is the letter asking for the local bill to be just that it's declared an enclave?
Right. The letter's asking for the delegation to look at and approve the local bill.
What did I, didn't I see a letter?
Yeah, we have one.
Yeah.
It couldn't hurt to make.
Continue.
It's in your. I'll move so that we would move forward on this local bill pursuant to the letter that's been drafted for Mayor Chalhoub.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. It's easy tonight, huh, Mr. Carter? You got to take it all in. Give our best to Representative Roth. Tell him local government still likes to work, and we like to still make some decisions here, too.
I know he appreciates that.
Yes, they do.
All right. So, we have no quasi-judicial proceeding. Public hearings, move on to unfinished business. So, we have a number of ordinances, one, two, three, and unfinished business, and we have another one, two, three, and new business. So, let's go ahead and have a second and final reading of ordinance 2021-04, amending Chapter 125 zoning to change the side setback for the water's edge. water's edge of swimming pools that are not roofed or enclosed from twenty feet to ten feet.
Ordinance number twenty twenty one dash oh four, an ordinance of the town council of the town of Lake Clark Shores, Florida, amending chapter one twenty five zoning of the code of ordinances of the town of Lake Clark Shores. Article seven supplementary district regulations, division twelve swimming pools, to change the side setback for swimming pools that are not roofed or enclosed, to have the water's edge of the pool to be ten feet from the side property line, providing authority to codify, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, and an effective date, and for other purposes.
Now, thank you, Charlie. Is, is there anyone from the audience or online that would like to comment on this ordinance before we uh, vote on and adopt it?
We have no questions and no raised hands.
All right, thank you. Take a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Moving on to the second and final reading of ordinance twenty twenty one dash zero six, amending chapter thirty four nuisances and noise.
Ordinance number twenty twenty one dash zero six, an ordinance of the town council of the town of Lake Clark Shores, Florida, amending chapter thirty four nuisances and noise, article three, noise in part to delete and add provisions regarding noise caused by landscape work, to revise the location where the noise is measured, providing authority to codify, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, and an effective date, and for other purposes.
Thank you, Charlie. Before we vote and adopt this ordinance, is there any comments or questions from the public?
No.
None? All right, take a motion. A second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
I've.
Moving on to second and final reading of ordinance twenty twenty one dash zero seven, amending chapter forty six, solid waste regarding placement of bulk and vegetative waste.
Ordinance number twenty twenty one dash zero seven, an ordinance of the town council of the town of Lake Clark Shores, Florida, amending chapter forty six, solid waste, section forty six dash thirteen, bulk and vegetative waste to prohibit the placing of vegetative and bulk waste on a non-collection day when a tropical storm or hurricane watch is issued, providing authority to codify, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, and an effective date, and for other purposes.
Thank you, Charlie. Any public comment or questions on this ordinance?
No, sir, Mr. Mayor.
All right, take a motion.
So moved.
All in favor?
Hi.
All right, those three are adopted. Let's move on to new business. First reading of ordinance twenty twenty one dash zero five, amending chapter two administration, article four, code enforcement.
Ordinance number twenty twenty one dash zero five, an ordinance of the town council of the town of Lake Clark Shores, Florida, amending chapter two administration, article four, code enforcement in part to revise the jurisdiction of the code enforcement board and the board members vacancy and attendance, to revise the citation system by providing for a hearing in front of the code enforcement board instead of county court, to add options of persons cited, to include hearing procedure before the board, collection and recovery of civil penalties, to revise the civil penalty schedule, to provide for an appeal, providing authority to codify, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, and an effective date, and for other purposes.
Thank you, Charlie. Any questions or comments from the residents listening in? All right. Can we take, can we do a motion to approve on that one, don't we?
Yep. So moved.
There you go.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
All right.
Okay.
Moving on to the next one, first reading of ordinance twenty twenty one dash zero eight, amending various sections of chapter one twenty five zoning to include daycare as a special exception to the single-family residential district.
Ordinance number twenty twenty one dash zero eight, an ordinance of the town council of the town of Lake Clark Shores, Florida, amending chapter one twenty five zoning of the code of ordinances of the town of Lake Clark Shores, article one in general, section one twenty five dash one definitions, article six districts, division two, single-family residential district, section one twenty five dash two ninety two, special exceptions, section one twenty five three hundred, minimum off-street loading and parking requirements, and section one twenty five three zero one, limitation on signs to include provisions for daycare facilities, child or adult, providing authority to codify, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, an effective date, and for other purposes.
Thank you, Charlie.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
May I ask Charlie a question?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Um. Dan, Charlie, do I have a conflict? Cause this is going to affect St. Mary's Church. And I'm um, a member of the church and their legal advisor. Should I um, declare a conflict?
Consider. I do not believe that that is a conflict that would prohibit you from voting. Uh, nothing in this inures to your personal gain. I believe that the con, that the potential conflict or the issue should be disclosed, but I do not believe that this rises to the level where you need Tobstain. You don't have to file the formal financial disclosure. What you have already stated on the record is sufficient.
Just, just wanna cover my, um, all my bases, as they say. Thank you very much, Mr. Check.
All right. Any uh, audience comments on this, Dan?
So moved.
I'll take a second.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
All right.
It passes. In the last ordinance on a new business, first reading of ordinance twenty twenty one dash zero nine, amending chapter one twenty five zoning and chapter one twenty one vegetation, to make definitions consistent in both chapters, and to clarify that grass would include artificial turf.
Ordinance number twenty twenty one dash zero nine, an ordinance of the town council of the town of Lake Clark Shores, Florida, amending chapter one twenty five zoning of the code of ordinances of the town of Lake Clark Shores, article one in general, section one twenty five dash one definitions, and amending chapter one twenty one vegetation, article two landscaping, section one twenty one nineteen definitions, to make the definitions consistent in both chapters, and to clarify that grass includes artificial grass, providing authority to codify, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, an effective date, and for other purposes.
Thank you, Charlie. Anything from the audience?
No, sir.
All right, I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Right.
Moving on to audience comments portion of our meeting. Mr. Murphy? Anything written?
No questions written, uh, Mr. Mayor, and we have seven attendees tonight. Uh, none of them have raised their hand.
All right, if they do, please let me know.
I will.
Thank you. Let's move on to status reports. We'll start with you, Chief.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. You have a copy of my report. Do you have any questions?
I do not have any questions, other than I'm glad to see that everybody is, all the officers are continuing to do a great job here and keeping our streets safe.
We just got uh, updated body cams with the newer technology, and uh, they went in, I think tonight, we started using the new technology. So actually, these uh, the newer technology allows us, and of course, there's a fee, and we haven't established that yet. I have to get with Dan, but uh, staff can um, monitor the officers on call through the camera and traffic.
Oh, that's wonderful.
So you can do it by computer or phone.
That's awesome.
But that's the new technology, so.
What is that? What's the key tracking system? Is that for like the keys of the vehicles?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions for the chief?
Chief, how'd the vehicle inspections go? I read in your report they were completed and everything was good.
Everything's good.
Damage repair, everybody's doing good with them?
Yeah, the uh, infrastructure is completely different now that we have all this uh, new equipment. We've had less issues, less problems.
They look nice moving around. That looks good, so.
We figured that, that we should be saving the town around forty thousand. Includes uh, a year, includes utilities.
Good. Very good.
So any issues, they're under warranty. So we've had a few of those, but it didn't cost us anything.
I like the sound of that. All right, Charlie?
My report's included in your agenda packet. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from Mr. Check? No?
No.
No. Okay. Mr. Clark?
My report's in the packet. I have a couple of uh, items to add to it.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, I'm pleased to be able to sit here and tell you tonight that fire rescue has dropped their local bill to create a fire, independent fire district for this year.
Big news.
Good. The second thing I'd like to report is we expect all of the census data to be available by the end of September, but I am very pleased to tell you that the uh, redistricting for the town of Lake Clark Shores has been completed.
Are there, were there any changes?
We don't have districts. There was no redistricting. Just seems to be a hot topic right now.
I didn't think there was any changes, anything to worry about, but the way you phrase it, let everybody know, no changes were made. Do we know where we fell in line as far as reporting? I know we were like one or two or three for a while in the state.
Still, 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 as I have seen, third in the state.
Third, okay. Any questions for Mr. Clark? All right, and tomorrow, we're gonna be declared a impaired water body.
The lake will be declared an impaired water body, yes, most likely. Uh, that will trigger uh, a whole pile of action items on the state's part and on our part. The first will be a TMDL, total maximum daily load. I don't know what those numbers will be yet, but that will require us to create a basin management action plan. Uh, the basin management action plan will require us to clean up the lake.
Can you elaborate, Dan, please, for those that are listening? I know we've all talked about.
Sorry, Mr.
Can you elaborate just a little bit about being declared, uh, the lake being declared an impaired water body?
So the uh, feds and the state get together and they do water quality analysis. Um, the numbers that I have seen in their posted information start about two thousand and nine. Um, they've monitored the lake since that time. There are specific criteria within the uh, Clean Water Act, I believe it is, section three oh three D, that uh, require us to be no dirtier than what would be considered the lake being able to, to sustain itself. And apparently, we're above that right now. So they're going to come in and, and the state is gonna come in and the state's gonna tell us what we have to do nutrient-wise, with what nutrients we have to remove to get to a point that they're comfortable with. And that, in essence, will be a mandate to clean the lake.
An unfunded mandate.
An unfunded mandate for which we cannot point to our neighbors and say, well, there are five canals that flow into the lake. You all have to clean up your canals, and then we wouldn't have an issue. Doesn't work that way. We, we have to clean it up.
Should this assist us going after the DEP money for our conversion?
We, there's no guarantees, but we've already sent letters off saying, we're an impaired water body. You need to help us. I mean, really, we're, we're, we're now a higher priority than the guy next to us that isn't on an impaired water body, right?
We predicted this eight, nine years ago.
Yes, we did.
And people just, they keep on throwing stuff in the canals behind their yards, and the runoff on the phosphate levels, as I understand it, is contributes to this. And a lot of um, lawn maintenance, um, debris goes in there.
Nitrogen, um, the grasses, when people mow their lawn, the nitrogen from the septic tank drain fields and from fertilizers, uh, and the phosphorus, all contribute to chlorophyll A algae blooms. So most likely, we're gonna have to clean up the nitrogen to address the chlorophyll A and the phosphorus.
And that could include adoption of best management practices, which will eliminate the ability to fertilize where your fertilizer spreader is casting the fertilizer into the water.
Or within fifteen.
Or where the waters are. Correct.
Charlie, you just, I was gonna hit on that point, and maybe this is a good idea for our PR guy to put out on our website some of the best management practices. It's very difficult, as you know, to live by best management practices because there's going to be a certain amount of pressure from a variety of different things, cause there's also pesticide spraying, there's fertilization, there's herbicides, there's all of that. So maybe some education to the residents, uh, to help everybody understand that this is what the trend is going to be, and it's already been established in other locations. And I was gonna ask if I may, uh, do we get notification when Clark Aquatic is going to treat the canals? They do the canals and the county does the main body water, right?
Correct.
Do we get notice from any of them when that uh, treatment's going to occur?
We know that the county comes through the first week of the month, but we don't know the exact day, and it's weather-dependent based on how hard the winds blowing.
Is there any way that we could possibly ask Clark Aquatic, hey, we understand the dynamics and we understand it's a, you know, a change in progress, but is there any way that we could possibly get notification when that's going to occur?
Yes, I'm sure there is.
Be helpful, you know.
What, what?
If you don't talk, I don't know what you're thinking.
Well, explain to me notification. Please, please explain to me notification. Are we telling everyone in the town that Clark Aquatic is coming through, or do you just wanna know?
Possibly could be posted on the website and with a disclaimer that that could be a moving target. It's just a little bit of information is, I just, you know me, Dan. I don't believe that spraying herbicides in the lake is the only answer to this. It's just not gonna be sustainable in the future, and we have to kind of think ahead, like, the vice mayor just said, they've kind of predicted this, and, and this has been something that's been going on within the state of Florida for a while now. So we could just kind of stay ahead of the game and let them know that we're thinking about it and that, you know, we just wanna let people know that this is the game plan, because you and I had had that discussion when we found out that this is what's gonna happen. We have to think of another plan, cause you can spray all you want. I don't, that's not the answer to this problem. And at some point in time, as you know, my philosophy is that if we've got, you know, aquatic life in there, we're gonna be okay, but that could change just like that. And, and that's really, I think, what we need to just be a little more proactive and just let them know, just put something on the website. We don't have to notify every single resident or do a reverse, you know, four one one or whatever we call that, just somewhere up there that it's out there. Most people don't know until they hear it, cause I know the county comes through with the um, the airboat. And Clark, they're using the little, you know, skiff to get back into the skinny areas and get it done.
Right.
And it's, you know, it does hold a place. There is a place for treatment for that, but it's not the only answer, so.
And let's, if I may, separate the two issues, TMDLs and what we're talking about. What we're talking about doesn't have much of an impact when it comes to removing nutrients. It's, it's gonna be.
Yes, no, I, I do.
Septic tanks.
Well, I think the issue here is uh, education, and the more information we can disseminate, whether it be um, um, part of our newsletter that goes out on the, on the website, I think that's the key. And if we don't teach them on, uh, you mentioned best practices, if we don't teach them, hey, look, throwing this stuff on your, your yard or in the canal adversely affects everybody. And when I say we've been predicting it, we've been telling everybody, if we don't do something to clean up the uh, the septic to sewer uh, issue, uh, Lake Clark is going to uh, get in, into that hazardous situation of being identified as an impaired water body, and now they're gonna, the state may in fact force us to uh, go to sewers. That's gonna be almost like an unfunded mandate, but we're looking to the, uh, we're looking to the state legislator to help us, legislature to help us any way we can. And I think if, the more information we can put out there to our neighbors, to let them know what we're trying to do, you know, I, I think, they can't, they can't fault us for trying to be transparent.
And Representative Roth understands this issue extremely well.
Look, look where he, you know, look where he came from. God bless him. He's out there, you know, growing vegetables.
Yep. He deals with it, and his family deals with it every single day.
Yeah. Thank you, Dan.
Councilman Freebold will, will.
We're good, thank you.
Get some notices.
And following up on that, um, uh, Suck, seven months ago, uh, they-
Seven months ago, there was issues with regard to the vegetation in the lake, and I made a request that we go back to the University of Florida and ask them about best practices. And if you could send me a memo as to their response, and maybe if we can share their response and making sure that our neighbors know that we're doing what they told us to do. I'd appreciate that, please, sir.
Yeah, we, we had that discussion and basically the phone call was. Not really sure there's anything else you could be doing over what you're doing.
And I want the, I want the people, the neighbors to know that we, we reached out to them and this was their response. Because, you know, when I'm walking up and down, they want to know, what are you doing? I can't get in my, I can't get in my backyard to enjoy the boat. If you look at the south end of the main lake, it's, it's a lily field. Yeah, and now it's coming up our canal.
Yep. Yep.
Thank you, Dan.
Any other questions for Mr. Clark? All right. During that discussion, Dan, anybody write in or raise their hand?
No, sir.
Moving on to council comments, we'll start with Councilman Rodriguez.
Well, thank you. Our pleasure to go to Orlando last month and be up there and. See what's going on with all the different municipalities. I was glad to be a part of that. I was contacted by. A resident, Dan Whitaker, and I've shared this with Dan. Hopefully, in the next month, we can all look through his materials. I was trying to review it myself, and I can't quite figure it out, but as a result of loose dirt on his property, he has a hundred and seventy five thousand dollar lien. And I'm like reading through it, and I didn't even know there was a loose dirt ordinance. And we cite twenty six twenty six dash twenty six twenty six subsection three, but. That's, doesn't say loose dirt, so I'm going to, I want to get to the bottom of trying to figure out what, how he got cited. I know him well. He came to me. I told him to. Contact Dan Clark and ask for hearing in front of us at some point, but I'd like us just to be prepared so we can go through it and look at it. I just. I just think a hundred and seventy five thousand dollars is a lot of money for loose dirt on your property. And I'm not sure exactly how the whole history went. I don't pretend to know, and I'm not saying anything was right or wrong. I'm just saying I'd like to look through that. That's the one thing I was looking through. I was also happy to see the intersections being done. That's nice progress on roads because it's nice to have a ten. Something that's tangential. You can see it, you know, with your own eyes, and people want to know what's going on. Yeah, we're making progress with things. And I'm also very excited, Dan, that you got started the project to, for golf carts to go around a golf court, around a tennis court. And to connect us to the, our, our main CRA area, which is the shopping plaza. So I was talking to Sushi Joe the other day when he's going to get his restaurant going. He's trying, but you know, you can't blame him. Who wants to expand during COVID? So, you know, he's got issues there, but he's trying. I think soon we're going to have that restaurant there. We've got four brothers. We've got other places. I'd just like to be able to see, tell residents, yeah, you can take a golf cart and go eat there.
I think it's phenomenal.
So I think it's, it's, it's making us more of a cohesive community. Other than that. I think everyone's doing good work, Paul. Glad you got the energy.
Me too.
Must be nice being.
Thank you very much, Councilman Rodriguez. Councilman Pavone?
I actually, actually used the sidewalk on Sunday, which was perfect. Yeah, took you right around. So, and Joe's actually pretty close, so, so that's actually, he showed it to me. It's going to be a really nice place. When all, when it's all said and done.
Yeah.
So it's nice to see all the changes.
That's it. Thank you. President Proton Freeball?
Well, Chief, congratulations to your department. You know, when it's good, it starts at the top. When it's bad, it starts at the top, so. Congratulations. You guys are doing well, and you know, we sometimes we forget that the police department and the role that it plays, not just here, but in any small community. In light of twenty years of nine eleven, and who knew? And you just never know one day when you folks do what you do, when you walk out your door of your home, you just don't know. So I have a lot of admiration for what you folks do. And you're doing a great job. You guys are doing a great job. The presence is out there, so. Congratulations.
Well, thank you, Council.
Yeah, appreciate it. You too, sir. It's, you know, it's a team effort. Takes all of us here, so. Phil, congratulations. You got any big plans? I know, I know we looked at some equipment up at the League of Cities Conference. Did any of that information get back to you? Did you get that?
I gave all that to Dan. Dan's going to, you're going to give it to Phil, right?
Just something to look at. Oh, did you? Okay.
And we have no money.
You don't write. I don't see anymore. I mean, you know. But you look good, so I'm glad you're doing well. All right, gentlemen.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Shalhoub.
No, I'm just so glad that we put back in the budget our activities for the tree light, tree lighting. Maybe we can also think about doing the parade. But some neighbors reached out to me and wanted to know when, when we're going to do the barbecue. And I told them, well, let's keep our fingers crossed and. Everybody go get vaccinated or stay safe. Maybe we'll do it in March next year. So they're pretty excited about that. I've had an opportunity to take a look at the website and have some suggestions to Dan, going to give it to you outside the meeting. To make a correction and update it a little bit because I think it's aged regarding our history. I think there's some misstatements in there. So other than that, that's about it, and thank you for all you do. Lot of neighbors want to do, if we're getting over a million dollars in the American Rescue Plan, is that going to be able to reduce our taxes? And I think you explained it very well that the dollars that we're receiving are earmarked for. Specially designated areas within the budget that prevent us from doing too much of anything other than following that requirement. So thank you for elaborating on that. I appreciate it, Dan. And for all those that suffered a loss twenty years ago and the. Tragedy that befell the nation on September eleventh, my thoughts and prayers go out to the families. I remember that day because I was going to the office and came over here to the town hall, and boy, was it a somber. We were, we were just all in shock. So may their memories be eternal. God bless America.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Just some quick updates. We did go to Orlando, myself, myself, Val, Greg, and Dan. We spent a lot of time meeting with our neighbors at Green Acres and Lake Worth, especially some of the newly electeds in Lake Worth. We are still actively pursuing the Blue Way Trail and trying to see how we can make some headway there. To get that boat lift and that entire project off the ground. I know Dan continues to work diligently in that regard. The good news is, is everyone that I spoke to, and I believe that Greg and Dan spoke to. They're all in favor of it. It's just a matter of how can we logistically make it work. So for all those who are wondering, what are we doing about it and how is it going? It's still moving forward. It's going to take some time, but rest assured, everyone on this council wants to see that project happen, and we're doing everything we can, along with Mr. Clark. To see that project through. With regard to the Finance and Taxation Committee, our priorities this year are going to be protecting the local business tax, which is important to Lake Clark Shores. And for multiple reasons, but it's also important to a lot of the other municipalities here in our state. And also asking the legislature to look at actually enforcing the communications services tax on streaming services. Much like many other municipalities, Lake Clark Shores has lost a ton of money over the years from people cutting the cord and going to streaming. As the only taxes are really to those cable and satellite services versus the streaming services. So the more people that cut the cord, the less money coming into our town, and we are relatively a small budget compared to many other municipalities. Which ties into me being asked to do a presentation to leadership Palm Beach County earlier last week. And the topic was, how do we collect our taxes and what do we do with them? So we were there with the clerk and comptroller, Joe Bruzo, as well as the tax collector and our property appraiser. And they all did these wonderful presentations, and when it came down to my portion, it was basically the local government. How do we fit into this big picture? And the bottom line of it is, we need all the money that we can get when it comes to our taxes. And Tallahassee over the years has done what they can do to limit our ability to tax or reduce our taxes and always impacts our ability to provide services. So ultimately, you know, these tax protections that we're seeking from the CST tax and from the local business tax are important. Especially for our town where our budget, you know, from tax revenue is a little over three million dollars just from the ad valorem, not ad valorem side of it. And then, of course, you have Palm Beach County over what, one point six billion, something like that. So like, we're quite small, but. Dan, as you heard today, does a great job as well as the staff, making sure that we're spending the money wisely. And we're budgeting so that we can make sure we continue to provide the essential services to our residents that we have been for many years. All right. That's all I can think of off the top of my head at the moment, after what I wanted to talk about. Look forward to seeing you all September twenty eighth. Our next budget hearing. That'll be our second and final hearing, and then, then we're going to adopt the budget at that hearing, right? So please tune in in two weeks for that meeting. Have a wonderful evening.
So moved.
Is it Monday or Tuesday?
Tuesday. It's Tuesday.
Approved merger.